Good afternoon again, and the time is, good afternoon for the first time. The time is now 1:20, and a quorum of the board is present. The State Board of Ed meeting of January 15th is called to order. And as I mentioned, we're going to go right to public participation for our guests, or will we do, were we supposed to do intros first?
No, we've planned to do the intros of new employees after public participation.
Okay.
Go ahead and be seated, Mr. Love.
Welcome back.
Okay, the first speaker is John Love from Holly. Mr. Love is the only speaker that I have, so if you have a public participation form, I just wave your hand and I'll come pick it up, so we know. We're ready when you are.
Well, I wanted to start off with the Constitution. Unfortunately, I gave you my only, oh, here it is. The duties of the State Board of Education, I wanted to meet the two new people that you have onboard. It says the duty is leadership and general supervision over all public education except those granting baccalaureate degrees. General supervision's the same authority that the Regents have at the University of Michigan. They can hire and fire anybody and are responsible for oversight. I read the minutes of the Constitutional Convention, and in that they said specifically they wanted to have a Board of Directors that's insulated from politics. They said the Governor can come down and visit, but he's an ex officio, non-voting member, but he's a member of the Board. So you have to conduct the meeting to that kind of standard, and that's what I'd like to see done. A Board of Directors should talk about the costs. People in Michigan spend $23 billion on education in Michigan, and that's not just what the legislature grants them, it's other incomes they get from property taxes that don't go through the legislature. Debt service, tuition payments, it's a great deal of money. Should be reviewing the finances of the system, the number of students, the number of districts, and that includes these charter groups, and that's growing, about 800 districts now. The dropouts is about 30,000 a year. And the performance, how are we doing on tests? We're rated, it depends on who you read, 23rd in the United States. Our teachers are at the top in pay. So we have to get people, there's discussion, we have to get people ready to go to college. No, we have to get people ready to graduate from high school and deal with the dropouts. Then let's talk about Detroit, the big mess. I've gone down to some of the meetings down there, and I was shocked when they revealed, they put up a slide showing what the status was. 3% of the kids pass the test in some of these schools. And this Highland Park group, they established another emergency manager, it should have all been combined, and that's under the power of the State Board of Education, you could do that. I have a copy here of a letter I got back from the Governor's office when I talked about this, so I'll pass that around. The last thing I'd like to talk about is this letter from the superintendent of my schools in Holly. I went and asked the superintendent, what should be done to improve education? What would you like to see done? And he said, well, I've had an idea that I presented, and I've gotten no feedback. I said, well, what is it? Explained it. I said, why don't you give me a letter, and I'll present it to the State Board of Education, which I did. I gave it to the Governor twice personally, and he claims to be an innovator. What that is, and I'll give you a copy of this letter. "I believe that a standardized financial accounting system by all state public school systems would be a wonderful asset." Very simple. He said, "There's needless duplication of energy, effort, and usage of time. To become more productive, it's a crucial step so that they can compare easily the different financial systems that they have." If I was an accountant running the state like the Governor, I'd want to see something basic like this done, that's, yeah, it's going to take work to do it, but this is something that would allow them to share financial information. He's never received a response, or comments, or anything from the State Board or anyone about this suggestion that he had. I know there's 800 different school districts, so if everybody wrote a letter, you wouldn't have time to answer it. But I've taken the time to solicit his input. I feel an obligation to get some kind of a response. And I'm presenting it again to you, I'll give you another copy of it. To forward that, evaluate it, and, you know, you don't have to deal with me, but I think you should have an obligation to deal with Ken Barnes. If you don't do it soon, he's going to retire, so you won't have to worry about it. Anyway, that's kind of an overview, and this emergency financial manager deal is a waste of time because you have the authority to intervene based on the Constitution. It's real simple. And everybody's sworn to uphold this document. So, there it is. So, good luck for the next year you can work on that one.
Thank you.
Oh, incidentally, my grandmother was a teacher in New York City Public Schools. She retired there, and my mother worked there, too. But I'm just a rocket scientist, so it's a little different. Thank you.
Thank you.
And best wishes for the next year for all of us.
We share it.
We need to get this not so low down on the list.
Okay.
Are there any more people to offer public comment? Okay, thank you, and now new employee.
This is a practice that Mrs. Strauss suggested a while back, and we're just very pleased to do it each month. And I should just tell you, these are very competitive jobs, not just because the job market's tough, it's people like being here and want to be here, so I can just assure you, these are high caliber folks. We're just lucky to keep getting into department. Most of these, if not all of them, are replacement positions, as you know, and I think in this case, all of them are federally funded, as I mentioned earlier in our, yesterday at the briefing for the new board members. So our deputy superintendents are going to personally introduce folks that are with us today, and I'll turn it over to Carol, Susan, and Sally.
Good afternoon. Before we start with the introductions, our two state board members who are brand new, were at orientation yesterday and got to hear from directors. But for our current board members, I'd like to introduce Joanna Parker, who is our HR Director. And Joanna is really so very instrumental, along with the other department directors, in making sure that our recruiting and hiring process goes off without a hit. So, thank you, Joanna.
Why don't you raise your hand, I think we all know you, but there you are.
Okay, it's my privilege to introduce three new people. First of all, Jane Schultz, would you like to stand? Jane just came to us, she started on January 7th. She's the new Director of the Office of Financial Management, that has audit, accounting, and budget underneath that. So, welcome.
Thank you.
And would you like to say just one sentence about where you came from?
Well, I just have a lot of experience.
Mike.
Oops, sorry.
I have a lot of experience with budget in the state of Michigan. I've been with some other agencies, and with the Senate Fiscal Agency, I was the school analyst when proposal A went through, so I've got some background in the school finance, too, so.
Good to be here.
Thank you, and we're also very fortunate to have two new employees in the Office of State Aid and School Finance. Mike mentioned this morning how much we're dealing with deficit districts and districts who are in critical financial situations. So, I'd like to introduce Chad Yurchak. Would you like to stand up, please, Chad? And also Christopher May. So if you'll just say one sentence about where you're from, these folks deal with deficit districts, the new consolidation grants, et cetera.
Thank you, Carol. I came from Flint area School Employees Credit Union, where I was a loan officer for 10 years.
I previously worked in higher education and student accounts.
Thank you, welcome to the board.
You're welcome. That was for you, too, Jane. We're giving these.
I'm not running away. We actually have a new unit, the Provider Enrollment Unit, and I would like to introduce two new employees for that unit, Laquisha Childs and Kathleen Walker. Would you each say a brief sentence about yourself?
Hi, I'm Kathleen Walker, and I was previously a high school Spanish and government teacher. So I know education very well. My father is a superintendent, and I'm very excited to be here.
Hello, I'm Laquisha Childs, and I'm coming from the private sector. I process Medicaid applications, and previously I worked for a nonprofit within the housing industry, so I'm happy to be here as well. Thank you.
And in another unit, we have Bridget Walston, who's a technician in the Central Reconciliation Unit, and that unit is the unit that deals with childcare payments.
Good afternoon, I am very pleased to be working with Central Reconciliation Unit, and I previously worked for the Department of the Census in the Detroit East Office as a Quality Assurance Manager.
And the final position is a new position, however, it is a promotion, Jeremy Ruder. And Jeremy Ruder, I don't know if he got the short straw, but he accepted the job as the Special Assistant for the Office, a great start. Jeremy?
Good afternoon, and I was previously the Head Start Collaboration Office Director, so I've had an opportunity to introduce myself previously. Thank you.
We've got a couple of new people in the Educational Services. I'd like to start with Alex Clark. Alex is in the Professional Preparation Services. And Alex, you want to give us a little bit about what you're doing there?
Thank you, good afternoon. I'm Alex Clark, and I work in the Office of Professional Preparation Services, and I have been working on processing applications for teacher and school psychology certification. I've also been looking at the administrative roles for school psychology and assembling a team to work with to address revisions on that. I come from Lansing Public Schools, where I taught for 11 years.
And next to Alex is Katie Schmitticant, did I get it correct? Okay, Schmitticant, and she's working in our Office of Professional Preparation Services.
Hi, my name is Katie. I worked as administrative support in U of M in Flint through, I think, five different offices for the College of Arts and Sciences, and I'm doing administrative support here, helping teachers through the registration process and becoming certified.
And then it's a pleasure to introduce someone I've known for many years, from our days together in Wayne County. Margarita Frommert is in the Office of Field Services, welcome.
Thank you, and good afternoon. I'm so honored to be here. After 20 years of volunteering here, they finally got it. I've worked in Wayne County for many years, four different districts, K-12, education and administration.
Thanks. Welcome all, and you're welcome to stay till 8 o'clock tonight when we end the meeting. Saw some panicked looks on board members' faces more than. I think we can go right back to item E, which is the presentation, no, we did item E, we're going to go right to F, which is Certification on Michigan Tests for Teacher Certification, Three-Year Cumulative Report. And joining us, I think Sally's going to be here also, but Flora and Leah, give them a second, it does say pause for setup, but I guess we got set up at lunch, probably. One time I paused, I didn't need to pause.
Let me just, as a preamble, you know, the MTTC, which is the Michigan Test for Teacher Certification, basic skills and content tests that are required here in Michigan, and content tests are developed using standards which are aligned with and support Michigan's K-12 curriculum framework and benchmarks, as well as the grade level content expectations, high school content expectations, and then now they're aligned into the Common Core standards. So the current report provides individual teacher prep institutions, these different colleges and universities, and aggregate content pass passes percentages for that three-year period of time, 2009 till 2012, as well as a three-year comparison cumulative pass rates for '08 to '11 and '07 to '10, so you can kind of see a trend. And here to report are some of the folks you've already seen today, and Leah's the new face at the table. And relatively new in your role. Flora, maybe you want to jump to that, I don't want to steal your thunder.
Oh, well, normally you see Dr. Steve Sejic at the table with me, but he's unavailable today, so our new Assistant Director of the Office of Professional Preparation Services, Leah Breen, is going to be here to present with us.
So ask her a lot of questions. That would be great. So, those of you who have been on the board for a number of years know that this is something we do every year, is to give you the Three-Year Cumulative Report. It is probably the fattest report in your board material today. The good news is, we are not going to go over every single page of it. So Flora and Leah will give you an overview so that you can see how the trends are changing. Flora?
And I'm really just going to very quickly turn this over to Leah, because she's going to walk you through the PowerPoint, and then we'll have, if you have questions after that, we'll take those.
All right. So this is an annual presentation that we bring to the board. As Mike mentioned, it has aggregate performance data. It includes data by institution and also by individual test fields. The information only includes data where there are more than 10 or more test takers. When we give the institutions their own unique data, we, of course, include all their test takers, but for public presentation, you'll see a lot of asterisks where there are less than 10 test takers. It only includes eligible test takers. The institutions go through a data processing where they eliminate candidates that should not be affiliated with their institution. It includes candidates where it's their first time taking a test within that three-year period, and it includes their initial attempts as well as their best attempts at performance. So it takes into account those that have passed during that three-year period, even if they did not pass on the initial attempt. There are two different tables, there's a 1A table and a 1B table. 1A is a single performance report for the single three-year interval, and as Mike mentioned, there's also the longitudinal performance. You can look at three separate reports over three separate three-year intervals for a comparison, and that's also for each institution. So the purpose of the report is informational, it is increased transparency with our institutions as well as accountability. This raw data that's in this report is included as part of the Education Preparations Performance Scores. Right now, it accounts for 30 out of 70 points of their performance score, about 43% of their total score is based on these test results. We're going to look at a few highlights of the results, just a few, we didn't want to go into great detail because you have lots of time to look at the report prior to the next meeting. But when we look at them, you need to know that we rate them in four different levels. Those greater or equal to 90%, and that's where 13 of our institutions fell. The next category is between 85 and 89%, 13 of our institutions were there. 80 to 84%, and then less than 80%. So that's the spread of their aggregate performance for all of their subject area Some of the notable changes in there, the first one is Adrian College. It was a positive change. They went from less to 80%, less than 80% to between 85 and 90%. And Mary Grove College also went, had a positive change from 81 to just above 90%.
That's also a justice thing.
I run into the President every once in a while, and he tells me all the things that they're doing, and it sounds like they're really doing the right thing. Yeah.
It's good to hear, and it's good to see it show up.
There is also an increase in performance scores by Saginaw Valley State University, Sienna Heights, and University of Detroit Mercy. There were a decrease in scores for Albion and Alma. Sumchon Michigan University and Eastern Michigan University actually should have had a separate bullet. We went through the data again, and they happy to report that they did not have a decline, they remained in the same category. There was another change in range with Rochester College, which fall below the 80% mark. And there was no change for Finlandia, Lake Superior State, and Olivet in relation to the level, so that less than 80% category.
I saw the asterisk for two, but didn't Finlandia also indicate their?
Their programs are closing, yes. They're actually, their educator preparation institution itself is closing, so it's not just programs.
Okay, so that gives you a broad overview of what's happening with the various universities as far as their scores, so Mike, turn back over to you.
Board members, questions, thoughts, comments? Dan?
I just want to echo Kathy's sentiment. I run into David Mike pretty regularly, and actually the head of the School of Ed there, I've run into a couple of times as well. And they have assured me over and over, this was actually one of the first reports I saw when I got to the board, October, I guess, of '09, so January of 2010, maybe when you brought this, I'm guessing. So it's always stuck with me. So anyway, they've assured me that they've got things going to the right.
Oh my God, what have I gotten myself into?
Sure enough. It's great to see those numbers show up. The quick question for me is, Leah, you mentioned that 43% of the educator prep institution performance score, assuming the overall metric that you use to evaluate the performance of the educator preparation institutions, 43% of it is based on their passing rate on this exam? What's the other, what else goes into that performance score?
Yeah.
No, go ahead, you got it.
Oh, okay. It includes survey data from the candidates as well as their supervising teachers. It also includes the program completion rate, diversity score, high need content, and some principal feedback from their first year of teaching.
And Dan, that is one of those, the survey that's included in that score, that's one where, that we talked earlier about moving it from immediately after graduation to after you've had some experience teaching.
Yeah, right. So I guess the only thing in there, you said the program completion rate, meaning the, so for a institution, the percentage of students who enter the program but don't complete it is, so like the dropout rate from the program is a negative for them, is that right?
Well, we look at the cohort that starts in a given year. Say, for instance, the 2012 cohort of candidates that start, then when they're out like five years, we look at that and say 2017, how many of those people actually completed that program? So we, that's how we kind of track back and make sure that they're retaining candidates and getting candidates through the program successfully.
So the higher the completion rate, the higher, from what point you get?
They will get, yes, they will get some points for that.
Kathleen, please.
On the other hand, maybe some of the people who dropped out, you didn't have the right disposition or something. Maybe it's good that they dropped out.
That could be.
Could be in positive.
What might be, I mean, we should have some discussion about what might be another way to, I mean, this is even the higher ed, somewhat legitimate argument about the way they're being measured on overall graduation rates, but any thoughts including from?
Well, we have struggled with how to figure, I mean, exactly that dilemma. In some ways, you want the ed prep institutions to discourage people from going into education if it doesn't look like they really were made for it. So that's part of the reason we're looking at the whole system, because that was a double edged sword. You don't know if that's really a good measure that you've got a high retention.
It could be exactly the opposite.
Michelle, please.
Because I know at Wayne State University, we've been struggling with where I work, we were struggling with that, and one of the things that's happened is that they've increased the admission standards, and it's had a significant drop. And I haven't seen all the figures, but what I'm told is that particularly minority students, and some of the same people we're trying to recruit to become teachers, is having disparate impact for whatever reason. So, yeah, so I think, in looking at the retention, at least for some people, I mean, I guess five years is a long time. For instance, the undergraduates, ours are, you know, some universities have, you know, non-traditional students that are working and picking up classes here and there, and it takes them 10 years to graduate, and it's not always reflected. And then to have that counted as a negative, you know, I mean, decreased funding and a lot of times, so it creates some unintended consequences, I think, by looking at those retention rates. And because we also have, if a school has a more general, you know, admission policy and letting more and different types of people in from different backgrounds, you know, different, you know, learning experiences, maybe they don't, you know, I mean, it discourages that, makes you want to just take more point students than nobody else.
I just have a clarification, because when we talk about that five-year period, we're talking about from the time they're admitted to the College of Education in the program, not the time that they're admitted to the college or the university.
Right.
But that ed program.
Right.
So that's the five years.
That doesn't sound like a long enough time, I mean, five years from the time they go into the graduate program.
And just thinking out loud, is this one that we are asking the boards advise down the road for rethinking these parameters?
Most definitely.
So this is a good start to that, you know, that we think these are ready to be updated and have some of this. Because the reason it's been in traditionally before any of, well, for my time, anyway, and I think has merit that we don't want to lose totally, is our institution is giving enough support to help kids get through, so there's this fine line between that and yet you're not, it's not for you. So there may be a way to, I think we'll have time, and I'm not sure, is that coming back in the spring with some recommendations we're thinking about? So your thoughts, starting today, or certainly between now and then, would be helpful. We're trying to improve on these and make them fairer and try to take all these nuances into account. Richard, do you have your?
Appreciate what Michelle's observation there. This does seem to be a case of where the scoring system was developed with one kind of teacher preparation program in mind, kids who've gone from high school to college, and then they're going to finish it off in four years and so on. And there are other teacher institutions that specialize in training second career folks and/or part-time students and that sort of thing. So we should give some thought as to, as we revise the system into one that does not reflect on some of these aspects which, to my mind, are kind of irrelevant. I mean, whether it took you three years to meet the requirements or six years to meet the requirements, I'm not sure that's really relevant to the end product, which is what we want to evaluate. And maybe, so as we, and I don't have any instant solutions right now, but just as we think about these things going forward, we want to come up with a system that doesn't unconsciously discourage innovation in producing quality teachers because it doesn't follow the, what has become a traditional model or a practice.
Thank you.
We would agree with that. That's basically why we thought it was up for rethinking and look forward to that discussion. Kathleen, please.
It is interesting, when we did this, it seemed like a good thing at the time. And then with experience and new things developing, you have a different view of it, and maybe it's good, I'm glad you're going to look at those and see if we should be changing them, because situations change, and we have experience to measure it by.
And I know Sally's got a team meeting with the Deans, I'm meeting with the Deans at some point, so we'll have some thinking from them before then, and then we'll look at what some other states are doing and maybe get some glimpses. Because it is this balance of, I truly don't think it's the teacher institutions, so I'm not just saying this to be nice about them, but there have been some, more often in the for-profit world, where their goal has been get kids in for a couple of years, take tuition, and they never graduate. And I think that's, I won't mention a specific one, but there's one that's gotten a lot of of national press on that and as their campuses have evaporated. So I think there's a, that's what we're trying to find, is where's a balance that you're given proper support, someone might have been struggling their first year in that, but are you helping them get through this so that they can do something they've wanted to do and yet not do it in the unfair way that you've already brought up? Dan?
I'll look forward to the follow-up in the spring and the chance to talk about the performance score overall. When we do that, I know that there is a significant push underway to try and kind of create credentialing and more professional development opportunities for early childhood educators. And I'm wondering how that fits in, if at all, to this educator preparation institution performance scoring and so on and so forth. And so if there is anything tied to that at all, whether it's scoring folks who, you know, provide CDA degrees or other early childhood education, I'd love to hear that as part of the, have that as part of the conversation.
You know, an example also in addition to that, Dan, to stimulate board thinking before that spring meeting, is we think there's a way to incent without being oppressive, but using the board's authority to incent through this measure, helping us with supply and demand of teachers. That I even know some deans who say that would help them be heard within their institution in a different way. So for example, we're very short on math and science teachers, as you know, and on special education teachers, and we have loads and loads of elementary teachers. And so there, that is something at least we're thinking about, and how might we incorporate that in something that would gain points, you know, if they helped? Because overall, I think to the point about general supervision and our role, that often doesn't have the teeth that we would like in it, you know, given we're a local control state and other issues. We still have ways like this that, not unlike our earlier presentation today, where we can make a big difference. I mean, that, if, for example, that fit in in a fair way and you could actually, we want, we want kids to be higher achieving in math and science. It's hard if you're in Detroit right now and there's very few math and science teachers actually teaching math and science. So to pretend it isn't an essential part of this formula and just keep holding people that are doing the best they can highly accountable for something they're not trained in, where's the pressure points that we could use to say, we need you to help us get math and science teachers? I mean, otherwise, we're just spitting in the wind here. So I think that's, that's why this could be, and we don't, you know, we don't have to get it done in one meeting. I mean, it's really worth spending some time to, we'll bring you something specific to react to, but can use all the creativity we can. John?
I'm all for continuing to improve our tools for trying to get the outcomes we want. I guess I just wanted to, this type of reporting is analogous to the accountability effort around are our kids learning? Transparent, public information about whether either kids are learning on our test scores or teachers are performing on their test scores. Put some pressure encouragement on the institutions to try to do better, because they want to do better. They want to better prepare teachers, they want the teachers to score higher. It is one way to encourage behavior change and programming change. It has the same challenges as accountability on students. How do you, in reporting it and making it more higher stakes, not have them, not deal with kids who have further to travel and push them out, ala not welcome teacher candidates who might have further to travel? And, you know, how do you deal with growth versus just static achievement and reward growth? So I just want to, A, remind us, we, this is one element, accountability, transparent public information that drives institutions to do better, is one of the important features of how we make improvement. It needs to be coupled with how we actually help people do better. So we don't want to get rid of this thing, we want to add other things that help us, help teachers be better skilled, better prepared than any other profession. I just, I always get nervous when we start, well, we've learned that, you know, I don't, it's not what you're saying Kathy, but, you know, this element we don't need anymore, let's replace it with another element. We need this element, but we need to attend to unintended consequences and we need to add elements to the way we support teachers, not just how we report on their performance.
We're on the same page, and this will be really, this will, this will move the ball a lot by getting this right and adding nuances and keeping what we have that works. We good for today?
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, guys. The next item is presentation, and I think Flora stays, and Sally, and I think Mike's joining us. Hi, Michael.
Michael.
This is the presentation on implementation of the Michigan Online Educator Certification System. Our folks are duly and appropriately proud of this. It's a good news story. We don't often have them, and the Office Professional Preparation Services are going to present this, and feedback from survey of educators will be included.
So this is a, this is a good news story. We are very excited that we are actually online with our teacher certification system. Really brings us along into today's technology and has been very, very well received by the field. So Flora and Michael McHale are going to walk us through it.
Thank you. And this is, we really are happy to have this opportunity to talk about our new Michigan Online Educator Certification System. It does show that the department is being very innovative and moving, continuing to improve and move and work with our constituents to really be able to effectively and efficiently produce their teaching certificates. And our state law, MCL 380.1233, does require that anyone, I know.
Indeed, if you're impressed.
It does require that all individuals employed in schools with instructional responsibilities hold a certificate permit or vocational authorization. We also have other professional support personnel who require to hold certification in Michigan. Those include our school counselors, school psychologists, school nurses, and school administrators. So the system is used to process all of these types of certificates or licenses. And our objectives really are to process and issue the certificate in a timely manner and to move towards a paperless office. That is also one of our goals, is to be able to eliminate as much of the papers we've had to deal with. We have these huge file cabinets, so we'd like to get rid of some of those. So until 1980, about 1980, certificates were produced pretty much by hand or manually. And so then we moved to a data storage system, which was a mainframe computer system. And then it did require manual key punch and in order for us to receive payments, it went through a lockbox system, and we worked with our bank to do that and credit those payments to our accounts. We also had a turnaround time for Michigan colleges. It took us about six weeks to actually issue a certificate once a person completed their program in-state. And then out-of-state applications could have taken as much as from three to four months to go through that whole review process. And so then in 2001, we looked at how can we begin to use technology to improve on what we're doing in the office? And at that time, a new way of doing things was introduced, and that's when we began to use the License 2000, which was a commercial off-the-shelf system, so it was not necessarily customized for what we were doing in our office. But it was more efficient, although it did have some limitations. And I'm going to let Michael, I think, take over and talk about this, because Michael is our technology person, so when we have problems or running the issues with the system, he can identify those and work with Department of Management and Budget, Technology and Budget to get those problems taken care of.
So Moex is a secure web-based system that allows educators to apply for certificates and renewals of their certificates. The system is used by all educator preparation institutions, all school districts or schools, all educators in the state of Michigan, MDE staff concerning certification, and the general public.
Okay. So some of, some of what happened is once we got the system in place, we knew we had to take a look at the positions we had in the office, the work that flow in the office and everything. So some of those positions kind of changed and had to be reorganized to meet the demands of the new system. And it was, you know, the efficiency. So we had to do more monitoring, we're doing more monitoring and auditing of information that's submitted by our educators. We also had to establish a help desk, because as you know, and as you may be familiar with, if you have a password, sometimes you forget that password, you don't remember it, so you have to call the help desk to get a new password or whatever. So we do that a lot. And we also, once we had the system up and running, we started thinking about, well, is there any reason why we have to still print certificates? And so we now have a feature in the system that allows educators to print their own certificates. They can get duplicate certificates 24/7. So they don't have to wait for us to actually mail them a certificate any longer.
So our system function at a global, at a very high level, we have the Apply for Certificate Permit Module, which is a very intuitive wizard-driven module. Basically, depending on the outcome of a person's credentials, the system will ask them a series of questions and determine what they're eligible for, using, what is it, the error checking throughout the system. We have our application processing on our end. The consultants can review and process a person's application all through the system. Our online certification verification, which is for the general public, anybody can go to our site and verify a teacher's credentials. And then we have our global functionality, which is, we can control within our system all of the fee amounts and expiration dates on a certificate and global parameters, basically. We have a reporting function, which can produce any style report you would like on certification information. Our credential data exchange, where school districts can upload a flat text file of an educator's demographics, and the system will generate a report of all their credential information in bulk. And then our security module, which of course, everything is very secure according to DTMB security standards. This is just the basic number of days that it took to complete everything, not going to go through everything, but we had our pilot that took us about, the whole system took about 407 days to complete from beginning to end. That's just development, the development phase. Our critical incidents activities, we have our pilot implementation, the fourth line down, took us 44 business days to implement the system, to roll it out basically to all the school districts, all the educator preparation institutions, and all the educators that are going to be using the system. Our legacy system challenges, and this is just visual, we had our colleges and universities that would send us a paper roster or electronic roster that mailed into our, to our office. We'd have somebody on our end key punching the data, and then we'd produce invoices, and then those invoices needed to be mailed out and folded. Then we'd get a notification back from the bank electronically that we'd upload into the system. We'd print our certificates, fold our certificates, and mail them out. And we've eliminated all these processes.
So you had to see that little animation to understand what we were going through in the office with this. And so these are really the benefits of the new Moex system. And it's the reduced workload for all of our stakeholders. Fully, it's a fully automated system, it's dynamic capabilities, interaction that people can have with us. We can email people, they can email us, you know, so we can send out little surveys, we can send messages to educators across the state. So it really is a very dynamic type of a system. The turnaround time has been greatly reduced, our real-time reporting. Michael can get me a report in five minutes if I need it, like I need it the other day. And it's really helping us to become more of a paperless office. And last spring, we invited over 60,000 educators and school users who were in the system to take our survey. We got responses back from about 7,599 individuals. And so what you're going to see next is some of the results of the survey. These are kind of the demographics, is whether they were an educator applying, and you see that 92% of the folks who replied were educators. And then we asked if they completed teacher preparation program, and you can see that the majority of those folks did, about 85% of them said yes.
At a Michigan institution?
Oh, at a Michigan institution, I'm sorry. Those are in-state folks. And then if you look at the gender, we had, we have 78% of the people who responded were female. In the age range, most of the folks who replied were over 31.
That was interesting in itself, I think.
It was, yeah. Okay, go back. This one, oh, okay, go over there. And how would you rate your knowledge and use of technology? And as you can see, we had about 77% of the folks who said they were average to good or excellent. So we're getting folks who are used to technology and can use it and are comfortable with it. How would you rate your experience registering with the Michigan Education Information System? That is the portal we use for folks to come into the system, that they have to get their initial password from. And we see that, that most of the folks did rate it as good or excellent. We had 75, about 75% of the folks who were at that level.
Yep.
Yes.
So what's the quote over here?
Oh, that was my doings. Yeah, it went from poor, I can barely use the telephone, to excellent, I buy as many new fandangled gadgets as I can.
So that was just our, that was our measure.
Personality.
Mike, are you like a seven?
You have to make it a little fun.
Are you a seven, Mike?
I would, yeah, probably.
He's way, he's way past all of this.
Yeah.
No worries, that's a 14. She said that you barely use the telephone.
Those are the people that call us the most.
We didn't do a comparison of, we didn't do a comparison of age on those answers?
No, we did not. We did not compare by age. We didn't control for age in that one, so, okay.
Okay.
Next. Okay, how would you rate your option of printing your own certificate? And a lot of people like that, 55% of the people like that. Hopefully, we'll get that number up a little bit. Some folks are neutral about it, so. And then how would you rate your experience applying for an educator's certificate for an additional endorsement? And most folks are at the good or excellent or fair, so they like that part of it. How would you rate your Moex user-friendliness and navigation? And this went from fair to excellent. We only had 7% who said it was poor, so pretty much navigating through the system is fairly easy once you get into it and you get used to going through it. And then we asked for, we had some open-ended questions, we wanted to get people's feedback, so we gave them the opportunity to give us some open-ended information. And we asked, how can we improve this system and make it more user-friendly? And so these are just a few, and this one, the first one, said, I had no idea that I could apply immediately on January 1st. The year I needed to renew my professional certificate. Things have changed greatly since 1991, and I found the process both convenient and user-friendly. And then they go on to tell us when they applied.
Is that the one you wrote, Flora?
Yeah, well, well, I would have been a lot sooner than 1991.
Well, given we found out yesterday in the orientation that you were what, in 1976? You were what?
I was a contestant on The Price is Right. My favorite game show. And it's great once you find it. It was difficult to find on the Michigan.gov website, we'll have to work on that. The idea of printing your own certificate is a great idea. And then this is the first time I've used the system and I thought it was great, it simplified the process and the certificate was issued quickly. Awesome. Way better than Colorado. So we're great. And then how would you rate your overall experience using Moex? And as you can see, the majority of folks were either fair, were fair to excellent, with a lot of them in the 56% range as good. And then another open-ended question is number 14. Please include any suggestions or comments. And we do take these to heart, and that's what Michael works with the designers on, and what do you call it, software designers or whatever, anyway, to fix things. I don't know all the terminology that he uses. So they, we just kind of will skip to the last one and says, I, go back. I was surprised that my certificate was approved in less than two minutes. Wow, technology is a beautiful thing. So that's it.
Flora doesn't know all the terminology, she just knows door number two.
No, that's a different one.
Which one did you? And I see my buddy Dave Michaelson, he's going to help us get some publicity and a voice on this to show teachers, and we'll get to the FT, they probably already have put it in. Thank you, sir. Well, great. Any, yes, please, Bobby Johnson.
I just have a personal story from it, so when I saw this was on the agenda, I was excited. So it was, it was June, and I just received the Teacher of the Year Award, and, and I was doing some webinars through your site on LearnPort. I got done with my webinar, and I was printing my certificate, and at the bottom, it shows you your expiration date, and, and teachers don't pay attention to those expiration dates. That you're five years from now, so I looked, and it expired in two days, and so I freaked out. Somebody else is going to get this aboard now because I won't have a teacher certificate. So it was a Saturday night, and I was sitting there freaked out, two days, I'm no longer a teacher. And I went searching all through the website, how many weeks is it going to take to get this in? Is my school going to find out before school starts? And I found that on there, and it was so exciting, because I, I always have the college credits, so I had all my credits and everything to do all that, and typed it all in, and then I found out I could print it right away, so this was like in, in my jammies at 1:00 in the morning, and, and I was just so excited from that, so. I think I was the last one that wrote that, I was surprised. But it was just exciting, and now I tell all the teachers about it, because a lot of them don't know that, and I'm just like, you know, you can get that printed. I just told a teacher the other day, and he's like, oh, I gotta go do that. I'm like, you can get it printed now.
Thank you.
I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Funny, thank you.
Okay.
Thanks, guys. Thanks, Mike, for your work on this. I know it's long, you did a great job with the team.
Thank you.
Flora, as always. Okay, I, uh, let's see, we're, we're back to, so approval is State Board of Ed Minutes for the Regard Committee of the whole, December 11, 2012. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Spoken by John, supported by Dan. And any corrections, additions? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same? Thank you, we did a couple of participation. Did introduction to employees. President Austin.
Several things, but first, I want to say thank you to my colleagues for your support, and know that I certainly will be working, as always, to help us find ways to work together in the direction of things that are most important for improving education. I also really encourage all board members, not just the new ones, and I want to support you and empower you to contribute in ways that you want to and that you can best, and you're all elected to this board and should have strong, independent voice, active in what you believe is right, while we find ways to bring those voices together to improve education and work together on things. So I just want to encourage that and empower all of you to do what you want to do and can do to improve education. I guess I, we, we didn't do off of the committees, I have a couple other substantive things I want to talk through. I did want to note, as we reorganize today, we will continue what has been our good practice of inclusiveness in all decision-making at this table in our committees. We'll continue to use the informal agenda planning nucleus that starts with the President, Vice President, and Secretary, however, as always, that agenda planning group is open to all, and I anticipate both Eileen and Richard and others of you will participate in that when you and as often as you can, so that you're bringing your ideas and directionals forward. So that will be open, and the committees, I think we discussed together, or as we got organized, we only have three real sort of standing committees. We can create new ones, and the President has the opportunity to ask people to participate in those committees. So I think what we are looking at, we have Legislative Committee, which will remain, obviously, very important. I'm asking Cassandra to chair that committee. I'm asking Lupe and Eileen and Kathy to serve on that committee. And again, any others are welcome to participate, we just have to anticipate forums and plan appropriately, which we always do, yeah. We have a School Health Committee, which by our grants from, for school health, a board member is a part of that committee, it's a good group. I, you know, Kathy, I think you, I ask you to chair and continue on that role, which I appreciate. And I think, Richard, were you willing or able to continue in that role, okay, on that committee? And again, if anyone else wants to join them. We also have the Blind Trust Fund at school, which Kathy has generously added in the Health Committee or championed and is willing to continue to do so. And I'm not sure if any others of you, Eileen or others, wanted to join in that. Michelle, you, okay, so I'd be welcome. And again, others who have interests, either continual or episodic, please feel free to participate, and we may set up additional committees. I really do think, you know, we have a tremendous, you know, both job and opportunity to try to ensure the kind of robust public discussion and active steering of the education agenda to both not only live up to, but realize Mr. Love's continual challenge to us to live up to our duties under the Constitution. I think if anyone just watched the last three months with so much education reform ideas churn in the air with lame duck, potential activity, real and imagined, there was clearly a, an example of the State Board's leadership in steering that discussion, steering it away from some shoals of potentially damaging outcomes, and also continuously offering our thoughtful ideas of where we need to go that can reshape some of that discussion. So I think that's what we need to continue to do. And I know one thing many of, we discussed continuing or just, is to do a, another round of forums, and Cassandra helped just bang out a modest statement of what the purpose of these forums would be, as we did a year and a half ago, but in a slightly different context, being available as State Board members, but also helping convene thoughtful public discussion about education issues of the moment, education reforms, education finance proposals that may or may not be in the air. In this context, I think it is very timely for us to help convene and/or, and participate in ensuring really some full public discussion of, and thoughtful public discussion. We're not out there beating a drum in a particular direction beyond the direction that we, as a board, have agreed on. We've made some thoughtful recommendations around, to the Governor and Legislature, we made some thoughtful recommendations even in response to potential school finance changes. That's, I think, what we want to encourage, but we also want to provide a forum for people to be heard and to debate and, and discuss education issues. So I am proposing, again, that we help convene, there'll be a lot of interest, there already is tremendous interest in having these types of public discussions, because what's at stake does demand thoughtful public discourse on the direction of change in organization finance, and we can contribute to that public discourse. So this is a, a statement, I think it helps if we, under discussion, I'm asking you to support this statement that we, as a board, are approving of us helping convene these forums. Many folks are already eager to, to basically pull these group, events together. In fact, there's, you know, they're spontaneously asking, the folks up in Midland, you know, called me, said, would you, would you, could we do a forum, State Board members, maybe a panel with the Mackinac Center and others just to talk about what's in the air? Sure, that sounds great. Monroe, there's one already asked to talk more about STEM education and, and in the context of all that's going on with the educators down there, asking for us. Cassandra, and so actually, those two are already, the Midland one is, is being organized for February 26th at 7:00 PM, and the Monroe one is February 6th at 7:00 PM, and it's sponsored by the Monroe superintendents and educators organizations. And I know Cassandra, you were getting asked or looking at one already for your bailiwick.
The Oakland County one.
Oakland County, yeah.
Yeah, so Women Officials Network, of which I'm the President, has, would like to do, we do quarterly breakfast, and we, the next one is March 1st, and they would, hey, they've been talking for a long time now about having them want an education reform, so we thought it might be a nice, it would be similar to what we're doing here, and so we could add that one to the list as well.
And a thought was that this might be a good opportunity for individual board members to be the, the convener or help, just in the organizing in your backyard. So for example, Lupe, I could see you helping organize a forum in Grand Rapids, at which you are the State Board liaison or representative, you know, that would be wonderful. And others of you similarly. So I, I think this is something that is healthy for us to do. People want to see us, they want to talk in public, and, and it's a way to contribute to the public discussion. So that's one item, yeah.
Can you read those dates again?
These are ones that are sort of spontaneously emerging. One is, and we'll get, for any of these, what I think, as folks help us organize them and what we're doing, if we approve this, is just saying, we'd ask the staff here to help communicate once we have an event scheduled. Monroe is February 6th at 7:00, and there's a, a flyer already on that, and Midland is likely to be February 26th at 7:00 PM, and that looks like it's being proposed to be a panel discussion of various viewpoints, but that we would be representing. I also want to note, in this context, Jan, I talked about the Center for Michigan's work, you know, coming out with their gathering of education perspectives and priorities from their community conversations. They are going to release that very soon. And January 29th, there is a Center for Michigan-sponsored half-day forum on education writ large, and they've asked me to serve on a panel along with Peter Riddell, who's been working, Richard McClellan and others, on pieces of this agenda, but there's others' panels that are being, so that, as you can see, there's a lot of interest and activity in participating in the education reform, finance agenda, what are we doing, what should we do, where do we go, which again, I think it's very helpful for us to be active in, in facilitating.
I'm really unsettled by the fact that there are dates planned on this, when I didn't know about it. For example, I'm very active right now in STEM education, I'm on the Michigan Science Center Board. You asked me to work with Project Lead the Way and the Michigan Math and Science Centers, and you have, there's flyers out for an event that nobody asked me, or, you know, just said, can you come? So I, this is, this is exactly what I was talking about this morning, unfortunately, which is that when you guys have six votes, it becomes easy to not check with us, because I see heads nodding about dates, so clearly there's been conversation.
And I, Eileen, to, to that, and you know I'm always eager to not only share, but encourage you, all of us, to work on everything in STEM. These are just ideas of places, there were already, as there have been, folks asking and me and others agreeing to participate in something that approximates a forum on education. So while that's happening, and I'm eager for all of us to do more of that, I'm just asking for us to be proactive in convening more of those, while noting that there are few that are just spontaneously being organized, because people want a State Board member to participate in a forum.
So they weren't led by the board, they were led by outside organizations?
Right.
So they're not board?
No, but what I'm saying is, we should, we should agree, in my view, that we
I didn't know about them either.
Yeah, the only thing I'm saying is that if they really want a board member there, then perhaps what we need is a dissemination to Maryland or something else, just these dates are popping up.
Absolutely, and that's why I wanted to get this in front of us, so that as these people are asking, or they're spontaneously happening, we could say, let's share all information, but let's, let's help do more of this and agree to it together.
If we can shape, who is convening them then? Is it the, is it Phil Powers Group? Is it, who is it, who's pulling them together? Just communities are asking?
Yeah.
Who, as a clearinghouse? Is there a clearinghouse?
I mean, these are, these are, the few that have happened, what I call spontaneously, are some educators up in Midland, say, could you come up and do a forum?
Okay.
And we were thinking of this. So the other one was the, the STEM educators in Monroe. Phil Powers got his own, you know, set of activity.
Right. Well, the only reason I'm asking on all of this is that it would be good, if we're going to try and say, yes, we approve of this here, to really do have a board member for, for these places, and to have it be a time when board members can be there. So if, and Cassandra, it sounds like you can make the sixth, so that's good, but if, if we're going to do it, we should do it.
Absolutely, and that's exactly the spirit. Let's, let's make sure we have not only board members, but let's encourage board members to, to take ownership or leadership of some in their particular geography constituency as a, just as a tactical, as a path of getting, you know, making it work, just doing it easily. So.
Do we need a motion to?
I would ask for that when we come back to our discussion part of the meeting or our action part of the meeting, but.
John, on that, may I just say, of course, we will be happy to do the communication piece and, and publicize it appropriately, and I think we have vehicles to do that. I would ask if you, if you could, in your opening remarks when you do this, and maybe we, we could help you shape some opening or, or not, but I think if we're not clear on our authority, what I found last time is we had people barraging us to get things done that we don't have the authority to do. So I think what can be helpful is we're listening, but also that's a bill before the House right now, they're having hearings on whatever. You know, you could be at something in March for the sake of discussion, where they're actually doing the so-called Oxford McClellan thing, and, and any help in directing them to where they need to get, you know, in addition to the forum would be helpful. Because I, it's a little bit like what we ran into yesterday, where when we were talking, as I admitted, I was the same way my first month, you're just surprised by, in spite of Mr. Love's good intentions and reminding us each time, there are laws that limit our authority, and we're a local-controlled state, and I think it's healthy.
Are being, our board department, everyone? I'm trying to, what, whose authority are you referencing? I just think.
At least ours. You know, that's up to you whether you want to do yours, because I think what can happen is they think, well, just, you know, now let's just get to the department and we'll get that resolved, when in fact, it's a legal issue or it's a legislative issue. But otherwise, I think it's a good way to get people to be thoughtful and to understand what's out there, and then especially if they can get, for the sake of discussion, if a March forum happened to be right about the time they're doing hearings on a very important bill, get to the, get to the House committees, you know, and focus them. Because I, I find them doing that a lot more than I ever did before, where there's so much misunderstanding about what's our authority as a board department in that case versus the legislative one.
And I agree, I mean, it would be helpful to have some clear and accurate guidance that can be shared of this, let's say there are new bills, you know, these bills are at this place, and that's where you can go to directly attack or, or whatever you want. Our support or whatever.
Yeah, okay. Marty will help us with that.
It's me.
Dan, did you, I had, I had just one other on this topic.
Yeah, just a quick thought, which I don't, I don't want to ask for work that is truly unnecessary, but I wonder if it wouldn't make sense if we do do, if we were to leave the, you know, in effort to create these discussion opportunities in the community, it wouldn't make sense to kind of start the law with a three-deck, three-slide deck that says, here's the authority of the board, here's what the department does, here's everything else that, right?
A good idea.
And I don't know, I don't know if that, if you've given that already, but.
Yeah, that's a good idea.
Yeah, we give you a suggestion, you script, you can, you can edit it.
That's a good idea.
Good idea.
Thought that's what I was trying to say, but I probably didn't say it as well. It's my beetle friend. What's that?
What's that committee getting?
Uh-huh. We can do that pretty quickly. We could do that this afternoon and get it to John to edit.
There, real quick, there are, there are a number of other things for us to get on our agenda, and I encourage all of you to share items you think we need to be working on, and I won't name them all. I did hear from several, it would be really healthy if we could meet with our attorneys again on what is the status of the ACLU case, et cetera, so we could arrange that kind of private discussion with our attorneys about that process, that would be good. There's just one other topic that Mike and I and others of you have discussed a bit, you know, we, we, I, I hope we will, and Mike already shared a version of this with the, the deans of the schools of, or of the university, of the university presidents, the authorizers of charter schools and community colleges. We need to, I believe, with all these various, now we've got even more competing report cards on school success, or schools are doing better than others. Schools are better others if you measure them this way. Schools are better other, if you turn them upside down and, you know, look at them sideways. I think it is really important that we, A, you know, have our best top-to-bottom performance matrix for all schools, but then we do need, as we have new schools being created, more charters, potentially more choices of a variety of forms, that we are sharing information on the performance of those schools arrayed by the people that are responsible. So for traditional public schools, it is the school district that operates a number of schools, and they are on the hook for whether their schools are performing, and some that are maybe performing some that are maybe performing better than others. I think in the charter context and other schools that may be created by other authorizers, which was part of the discussion of late, we really need to be very clear in showing exactly as we report on these schools how the schools are doing by those that are responsible for them, schools, the authorizers. So that every authorizer, you're looking at the status and performance of the schools, that they are responsible as the public body. Because it's not the individual charter school and necessarily its board, it's the authorizer that is the public body accountable for the performance or non-performance of those schools. And we did not, in my view, unfortunately, have, as we lifted the cap, any particular quality control expectations on the quality of new authorizers or new operators that could be authorized. And so it's ever more important that we are very good at showing people, and some of the authorizers are very good. I just want to call out, I think Grand Valley, right? Because they put together a report that was arraying their schools on various dimensions of their performance that said very clearly, "Here's how our schools are doing." And other schools, other authorizers have been good at shutting some down in different degrees, and some are terrible. They don't pay any attention to their schools, and they certainly don't want you to know how they're performing. So I think that is a sort of framework, and it may be just publicly sharing what Mike shared with the president more privately. Here's a look at your schools that, you know, you'd better pay attention to, which was very helpful. But I think we, as a public, in the interest of transparent public accountability, should be offering that, and I know we've encouraged the governors' folks, and when we met with him a while back, to reinforce that. And I think it's important that we do it, and I know Mike and the team here is eager to, it says, "What does that look like, or is it just a public articulation of what you already shared?" And I know Dan had some thoughts on this, which I hoped he might share as well.
Yeah, I, there are other priorities that I want us to take up to, but I could not agree more that this really has to be one of the most important. So I've been clear that I think in places where the traditional district is struggling to educate kids, that kids and families should have choices. That having been said, if that's going to happen, we've got to be able to offer to those kids and families a way to actually figure out what the best choices are. And we're not doing that effectively as a state, we're not doing that effectively as a community in Detroit right now, and ultimately, the victims of that are kids and families who are trying to figure out where the best place is to meet my educational needs, what the educational needs of my child. And in the particular case of charter schools, I agree with John completely, so we have not, I think, effectively had this conversation, but the authorizing entity, whether that is the ISD or the community college or the university authorizer, is the entity that we should be holding accountable, the same way we would a K-12 district, DPS, or name your, you know, favorite traditional K-12 district. They serve the exact same functions. Their responsibility to close that school or improve, make sure that that school improves if it's underperformance. So high on my list of priorities as well is that report, that kind of accountability.
And in comparing, and I think this is a great idea as well, but I think it also needs to be looking at things around special education. I'm concerned, I've read a number of fairly recent studies that show that charter schools tend to not accept the more severely disabled children, and I think that also needs to, in any sort of comparison, not just looking at test scores, but looking at the percentage of not just general special ed, but the severe, even the more severe kids, more severely affected, because I think that has an effect as well as issues around Title I funding or poverty rates, incidence of poverty, which I think also affects, and expulsion rates as well, because I think that also plays into sort of undermining the ability to really compare apples to apples sometimes.
Can I share, based on John's conversation, I thought I'd at least give you, and maybe I could suggest this, that you may want it where we actually present this at a, let's say, meeting or two from now. But what would be helpful is if either to me or to Mertz that you would get maybe some other thoughts beyond, this isn't the format we gave the presidents, this is a summary of it. I mean, we gave individual letters. So for instance, it said, if you're going to say Grand Valley, that Grand Valley has, oh, well, let me give you these and I'll walk you through it. Why don't I do that for a minute? Because I think this might give you some ideas on how to add some other factors that then we could put together in a presentation. Let me just call your attention since John did the Grand Valley for a moment. So in Grand Valley's case, if you go down alphabetically, just below Grand Rapids, the total count is they have 43 schools, if you look on the right side. Thirty-five of them have no designation, at least in terms of that level of accountability that we have. None of them are priority schools, which is a good thing. Five of them, though, are focus schools, which means they have a big gap, and three of them are reward schools. So it's a start, and you know, I got some feedback from presidents where I actually think this has made them appropriately thoughtful about whether to take on a charter school capless or not. That it's, it doesn't mean they're not going to do it, it just means, you know, don't just take for granted that this is 3%. This is a very important function, and you need to take it, and I think, by the way, 3% money. But I think most do take it seriously, but I had one who, it's kind of a friend of mine, and he admitted that this gives him some pause. So what we could do is if, this is just what we gave them so far, we could present something at a future meeting, and if you had some other thoughts along the lines of what John or Dan have said, and Michelle a moment ago, we could incorporate some of that into it. One that struck me when John was talking is we probably have a column for the percentile they're in on a top-to-bottom. We might reorganize this so that, to Dan's point, where are the, you can't tell from this how many of these schools are in Detroit proper. And if you did it by Detroit, and I'm not sure if we have access to that, by the way, but for the sake of discussion, assuming we do, in Detroit proper, if there's 50 schools, where do they fall out in reward, focus, and priority? But I mean, overall, this gives you at least a sense, I would have been more, I didn't know that we did this ourselves. For all I knew, two-thirds of them were in priority, you know? So in a way, it's somewhat calming. And I would also say that I like the way John started this, because I do think we have to be aggressive in the best sense also with local districts, because I'm not sure all boards would know the distribution of their 10 or 30 schools. So a president, it's possible, would know more than the district president and board of education, where their 30 schools rank in terms of reward, focus, priority, and the percentile, but it's not like a way to maybe start it out.
Yes, thank you very, very much, and I thank you, Dan, too, and Michelle, because I think the main point, and Dan reiterated, school district, the school boards locally are responsible for the education of their schools, whether they're charters that they authorized or they're traditional schools. And the body responsible for the schools that they authorize is the community college or ISD or university that has these charters. And so I think it's where always, I remember Mark Murray even when he was at Grand Valley, you know, saying, "You've got to put the spotlight on the authorizers if you want to care about quality control." And he's always one who was willing to be very straightforward about what to do. So that's, I think, what we need to continue to do, particularly as we see more, we're seeing more schools, we're seeing more charters, we're seeing more new school variants, and we, it's not the answer, but it's one thing.
Good agenda planning, we can talk a little bit more about that. Eileen, Kathleen, Eileen.
That's going to be important, but the cyber schools, which we know nothing about practically, and that's going to be, because they want to expand them and have more, and we don't even know what these are doing.
Right.
So that would be helpful.
We could put the two cybers on the same analysis. Right now, I'm not sure how much data we have on the one year, but we'll have something, right? So we'd have at least some for last year. So does that sound like a plan? And if you have any thoughts that would help to get to Mertz or to me, and then we can present.
I'd like to get some information on the two districts that have emergency managers that have been handed over to the charter schools to run the whole district.
Okay.
That would be an important thing to highlight, I think, because that's another question I get asked. So how is Highland Park doing with this outfit? I have no idea.
Yeah. I mean, I think in both cases, we'll get to that one way or the other, but I think part of it is when did they actually take over versus when was the prior? We have to try to look at that.
Well, you know, I don't know what they're doing or how they're doing, but the little I've heard about Meskegan Heights, it doesn't sound very positive, but I don't know the facts.
And Meskegan Heights, as you remember, is a little bit odd, or not odd, and I don't want to judge it, but Meskegan Heights Board requested that, you know, so it was a little different.
They didn't request it to be turned over to a charter school district necessarily.
Right, and I would agree with that. I'm just saying, once you give up your...
It was a good idea or a bad idea, and was the operators are any good or they're not? I mean, in tradition, their reputations were not that good.
Yeah.
But I don't know how they're operating in those particular cities or those districts.
I think those are good points.
That's something we should follow up on.
And I do think if we can, we'll work with the team I work with also think about how do we do this in a way that's, as John opened, is fair and transparent about all kinds of districts. But I think it's fair to say for now, we should, we should be alert about new options in the sense that we don't know enough about it yet. So I mean, there's anything wrong with scrutinizing in the best sense the cyber schools, because it's a whole new thing, and trying to see, is it really starting to do what we want? If you remember, the board and the department together, but even independently too, was very much against that cap until at least the two years of data was done, and I think that was reasonable, you know? And so I do think it was unfortunate that the gun was jumped on that before we really know. So we could, we could talk at agenda planning about whether to do that all at the same time. If you will bear with me a little bit on what we can get done in one meeting versus over two or three, that would be helpful, but we're interested in the same time. Sounds good. Eileen.
I just, I'm curious, because the Center for, just a second here, I'm sure that you folks saw this on early release, but the Center for Research on Education Outcomes at Stanford just released a report today that's in the news, that's in our news clips, saying that measuring growth, that charter schools are doing very well, especially in Detroit, that they're... So the question that I would have is we measure growth against standardized testing is what, how does this compare to the standardized testing statistics that we have? And I don't know how they're measuring growth, so I'm not, I don't, have you seen anything, Mike? Do you, are you worried?
You know, I just saw the headline on it today also. I don't, I don't have the details.
Yeah, sorry. Well, one of the things I think to brush over in the article that I was looking at was not acknowledging that there's, you know, there's, for instance, with the disabled, they have, they do, you know, they're showing that they do better, but they also, there's studies showing that they don't take the more severely disabled, which cost more, which are harder to take care of. I mean, I think there's things that...
I'm not worried about that, but I am curious about how the statistics for growth weigh against standardized achievement.
Well, I'm also saying, I'm not sure if they're also, I guess I should look more closely at the study, but...
I think we all need to, and that's really what I'm pointing out, because it's not a rebuttal situation, it's just a question of, we're trying to go to growth. We view that as the, as something that we want for children. You know, the only measurement we've got right now is standardized testing. So as we look at all of that, you know, what does it mean? And does it, do the results come out differently than our assessment results?
That's a good, Richard, please, and Dan. And I'm going to my reporter, you guys are all going to leave at 3:00.
The Credo study, which you're referring to, compared students from the same social-economic background, so, and it's on the basis of this comparison that they, their six-year studies show that students of similar social-economic backgrounds showed more improvement in charter schools than what was at, so they, it was an attempt to compare apples to apples.
But I also think, I'm sorry.
Please, Dan, Michelle and Dan.
Yeah, oh, yeah, oh, thank you.
You're the new.
Because the things that I would want, and when we're doing our study, I think we also need to look at, you know, the fact of who goes into the charter schools, the application processes, who are expelled from the schools, if you look at cyber schools, the drop-off rate. So I think there's underlying factors that sometimes get glossed over that don't give us a true picture. I don't know if that's the case here, but I think that that's certainly happened with the cyber stuff, they'll give these graduation rates, but they have like all these drop-offs through the whole process, and I think that needs, that really, that's why I'm real concerned about the criteria that's used and also looking at all those underlying factors when we're comparing one school to another.
And just for this first one, we won't get into that, we'll just present you what we know our data is, and then we can maybe have discussions about, is there other kind of data that would be appropriate to look at? But it, I think it's revealing in itself, just to even do that breakout we gave you, and then if we do percentiles and see where they are, and if we try to look at some of these other factors, it'll illuminate itself. I'm very confident that most of the presidents, after receiving that directly, a copy to their president or their boards or trustees, in which they were, are trying to make sure they're not just creating a charter factory, that they have one, that they've thought about good proposals, and there are many good proposals, that they've actually worked with them to improve. I mean, I value very much the ones that have used their 3% to actually improve the schools they have. I don't know for sure that others don't, but I think there's some that do more than others for their, in the ones they serve. I think Central stands out at this point in terms of trying to provide these direct services from our experience with them. So this is all healthy, I mean, this is all part of our job to oversee this stuff and to build on it that way. That's good for now. Dan, and then I'm doing my report before people leave at 3:00.
Last thought. So for this work, I think it's important to draw a distinction between trying to determine whether charter schools are better than traditional K-12 schools, are better than private schools, are better than EAA schools. This isn't, for me, this is not about figuring out what form of governance works best to educate kids. I actually think that's a red herring for all of us. For me, there are good charter schools and bad charter schools, there are good traditional schools and bad traditional schools, there are good private schools and bad private schools, and there are good EAA schools and bad EAA schools. And what we should be trying to do is shine a light on the schools that are good or bad in any of those governance systems, right? And so a report like this says, "Hey, Bay Mills, for example, your portfolio of schools is not nearly as good as Central Michigan's." Maybe there's some things you could learn from Central Michigan if you're trying to charter more schools, right? Which should be something that we all care about. So I just want to, I think for purposes of this work, we should draw a bright line between trying to figure out what governance model is best. That's a conversation we can have, but I think it's a different conversation. I think for the purposes of this work, we're trying to figure out how to help the ones, the authorizers that are not as good either stop authorizing, right, or get better at it. The same way we want DPS to learn from another district, or NOBY to learn from another district, or whatever it is, right? The point is, let's help our lowest performers get better by shining a light on everybody. For me, that's what this is about. And I will, I mean, I've been a part of more conversations than I care to remember that have tried, that have been, that have been a part of this governance debate, which doesn't have anything to do with kids largely. Your point accepted, right? Special needs kids not being served well or effectively in large enough numbers by specialized governance systems. But that's a light, frankly, that we can shine, too, because my guess is that there are some authorizers in charter schools that are serving more than others, and frankly, the folks who aren't serving many would stand to learn quite a bit from the folks who are. So that's the lens that I want to bring to this work.
As long as everyone's standing past 3:00, so I can do my report.
I'm staying past 3:00.
Yeah, and I just want to be clear, I wasn't, is that where I was going with charter versus, although that's something that you could use the data for, or traditional schools? But if you have, yeah, 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 yeah. But if you have charter schools that are only locating in like highly affluent communities and then comparing them to charters who are trying to do work in, you know, urban cores, I mean, I think you have to take...
Apples-to-apples comparison.
Yeah, you need to really look at all the comparisons that have an effect.
Absolutely agree. That's what I'm about, is figuring out how to get apples-to-apples comparisons.
We call them beating the odds.
Right.
We call them beating the odds. We have a very sophisticated model. It holds everyone, charters and traditional alike, together to say, "Why is there a beating odds school here with the exact same demographics getting these kind of results and others here? And would you not be punished by this, but go find out what they're doing?" Very much what Dan just said.
Okay.
And it's working. Richard? And it's working. Richard, and then I'm going.
I'm very concerned that as we talk about quality versus non-quality, we obscure the fact that quality is not one-dimensional. And a school may be very good for one student and very bad for another student. I ran a small parochial school in Northwest Detroit for many years, and my banker had three sons, two sons went to the Detroit, was at Free Academy there in Northwest Detroit. And their philosophy was, you know, pursue your own interest. And the first child was interested in, first child was interested in electricity, so he went to that school and he was allowed to, you know, study circuits. And then his second son was interested in rocketry, so he went there and he was allowed to study rockets. Third son was interested in setting fires, so they ended up, yes. So they ended up sending him to my school with our traditional discipline and the structured back-to-basics kind of approach. And that public school was a great school for two out of three of his kids. But his other kid needed a different kind of school, different kind of structure, different kind of curriculum. That's why, that's the magic of choice for parents. They get to choose, not us, what's the quality they're looking for in a school. And schools that can't satisfy any parents end up without students and closed. Thank you.
See, the lawyer for the defense is-
So we've had a lot of choice in Detroit for a long time now. A long experiment of 15 years of a lot of choice in Detroit, and I will tell you that by itself, it is no magical existence. Bad schools stay open, and they're bad schools under anybody's definition of them. And some good schools that should have higher numbers don't. I don't think we want to create a system that rewards slick marketing, right? I don't think we want, this is education we're talking about, not cars. And there are minimal standards of quality that we would all agree on as members of a state and a shared community, that we would want to see all schools meet. I will agree that for different students, different families, they have different needs. Once that minimum bar of quality is met, by all means, choices should be available to folks. But you better meet that minimum standard of quality. I am not interested in the system, and I don't think our citizens in the state are interested in the system, that allows choice to masquerade as just bad education.
You know, I would admit to one I-
Or vice versa, bad education to masquerade as choice.
I mean, I had a, I think I've told this story. Twenty years ago, I'm a local superintendent. I have, this district's growing again. We have 16 elementaries. We bought a 17th elementary back from the Lutherans, by the way, who wouldn't take a penny of profit even though they could, sold us back for the same amount of money. And people don't want to change elementary boundaries. So the only thing we could do was create a choice. And we created a choice, and I'll just tell you, it was, it was a mediocre choice, especially in the beginning. And had to beg people to come. And by the second year, there were 3,000 people in line because it sounded neat. So it's not just in, you know, I think what Dan's saying as well as Richard is that this is universal. I mean, traditional school districts also market. And what we really need to know by having the metrics that are similar, this is why I think our beating the odds metrics are revolutionary. And I was with my colleagues on the phone, I couldn't get to DC Saturday, but I was with them on the phone for a retreat. And I'm shocked that, not one other on that phone, and that's only, there's only seven of us on the board, has anything related to apples and apples. And our beating the odds is really that. I mean, it's our, it's kind of our centerpiece to trying to figure out what's going on, that these are doing it and these aren't. And then as we perfect the tests, it'll be even better. So can I go to my report just before? One, now I don't even know if I should do this. This is only 30 seconds though. So Mike, and you've been waiting anyway. We're going to do this anyway because I can do the rest of mine in three minutes after this. And this one, I know Kat says I talk about Chris all the time, and I probably do to her fault, and, but sometimes it's to bring a human sense to this. And this is just to show you that for all of us, we have the things that drive us each day, but drive us in the field that we're in. And in this one, Michelle and Lupe saw this yesterday, but what a nice piece of luck that technology would allow me to be at the exact point when something happened for the first time.
Can you get us a date?
That's grandson Will. Okay, yeah, what a big boy. Never thought your head was going there for a minute. First walk, you know, right there. Happened to be that they were there. But I think it really is, anyway, it's helpful for me anyway, the more you can personalize this and think about where would I want Will to go to school and where wouldn't I want Will to go to school? And if there's a place that I wouldn't want Will to go to school, no one should be going to school there. You know, I mean, some, and that's the quality stuff that we're really agreeing on. There's maybe little differences on how we would, we would define that, and I think that's very worthwhile to work through it. Could I just, I think small things can fester, and I was mentioning to John on the phone the other day, that we, sometimes there's not an easy way to find out what's festering and undo it. And I got a little advice from Lupe yesterday that I need to be careful with emails, because it's one reason I put the word thing up there. You know, emails don't always give flavor and, but one I wanted to, since it's gotten some, some press apparently today, I didn't even realize it, but the Free Press, it's still making it look like the state superintendent, first of all, who can't do this alone, is giving money to the EAA. State superintendent is not giving money to the EAA. I've done this every time we've been requested to have a state aid advance, so the February money would come in January, 30 days in advance, no new money. And even the article got this kind of wrong, is if there's new money coming in, we've done it for Northville, we've done it for Brighton, we've done it many times for Detroit, many times for Highland Park. So it's a fairly routine thing. It has to meet some criteria here, and then it has to meet separate criteria over at Treasury, and I think that's where it is now. But it's not, just so it doesn't fester, I mean, it, it isn't about giving them money, and we do this routinely. It's just giving them 30 days more so they don't miss a payroll more often than not is what it is.
Could I ask a question? Do you know if, you know, if Pontiac has asked for the advance?
Carol?
What's the question?
Pontiac, have they requested advance?
Have they asked for the advance in their state?
No.
They haven't?
Not yet.
If anything, Pontiac-
They're collecting money from teachers to like buy supplies, and they think that they should be getting the advance.
I mean, they came right to the edge of us starting a process, and we ended up giving them a little more time. I mean, it's to try to get together before a process starts. Pushing the limit, I mean, it's tight. And then I just wanted a couple of things also, but I'm open to ways to unfester if there is some, always call me, I'm good with that, or whatever. And I think the advice about how email can leave tones that aren't intended is good, is good advice. I went to Kentwood Schools, the monthly visit last week. I was stunned. Kentwood Schools, which I don't know, I had an image in my mind, and it was a little bit like when I was superintendent of Farmington Hills. We had lots of poor kids there, but it wasn't the image. And I was in a classroom, I don't know, I forgot we had these. Are you showing some different ones? But one of them, they have refugees, I mean refugees, who were in tents in Somalia, Sudan, Nepal, weeks before. And we're trying to push Arnie, my group on Saturday, is still trying to get, I don't know that it's Arnie's alone in fairness, but get some relief on how schools are held accountable for kids that weren't even in their own language writing or reading a month earlier in a tent. And now suddenly, we have our own reprieve a little bit where they have to take the test, but it's not counted against them for a year, but still a year.
Right.
So this is one I would mention if I could for the NASB. We could use help. I mean, our group is CCSSO, NASB, and I'll get you something more concrete for whenever the delegate deal is, to try to get help and relief on that. Because I don't know how a school, almost all of the refugee kids are in this one elementary school just by the nature of the series of apartment complexes that have been open to these families. So you almost by definition cram them into one place, and it can get at some of the very issues that Michelle was bringing up. I mean, who would have, just would have thought that would be a more fair distribution. And I wouldn't have thought it was that large a number. It's a gigantic number in that one school alone.
Did you say Kentwood?
Kentwood. Kentwood. It's a little, I mean, it's beautiful in one sense. These are kids that had, you know, somebody gives no hope at all a week, two weeks earlier, and suddenly they're, they're here, you know? And it's different than regular immigration in a way. I'm very moved by, I mean, I should let you speak to that, but by Lupe's background and hearing more about your own, your own entry into Michigan to begin with and some, but that, that was an eye-opener. But that's one, we'll get you something, because I, we need help. I mean, Arnie needs some ammunition perhaps, but we can't have this be part of accountability system, and I don't know how people can do it. And then we're also still open, maybe we'll send something to the board with a list of the reward schools that you might be interested. I know we've asked you, but, you know, that you might more concretely say, hey, here's some I would like to visit, and then we could help you arrange for that.
List the places you are.
Yeah, why don't, we'll cluster them maybe by the regions you're in?
That'll be good.
We'll try to do that as best we can, to say, here's Southeast Michigan, here's, to make it more convenient. Not that you have to stay in your own region, but I think it would be really great, it would do two things. I think it would satisfy a legitimate issue about the way we used to do this with Blue Ribbon Schools, so we're doing them with our new designation of reward schools. And then by the same token, they just deserve, I think it gives, brings stature to their school, that board members have come to their school. We could even help organize how they want to do it, do they want to have an assembly? Do they, do we announce media? That kind of thing. But the first thing we start with is just, you know, volunteers that are willing to do some of these and would like to do some of these. And then I would just say, seeing two board, new board members yesterday, Lupe and Michelle, and hearing today, this is going to be a great year. I mean, really, good board members to begin with, two great additions with good thinking and backgrounds, and we're excited as an MD staff. Is it strange not to marry Ann and Anthony?
I know, Ben. We've got two Blue Ribbons.
Yeah. So Bobby Jones.
Well, we're past three, so.
No, some are still here.
I mean, I can say to both people, do you want me to post someone?
What, what?
Well, I had a PowerPoint, PowerPoint, I was wondering, but.
I think Cassandra and Eileen, for sure, have to leave. The rest of us can stay until 3:30 in my case. So please.
That might be enough time.
Marty, you said Marty.
He got quiet.
You're talking to a teacher.
And Marty's indicating he does nothing to present, there's no action yet across the street with the legislature, so that, that helps if it makes you more comfortable. This is always a highlight here anyway, seeing the real world and what real teachers do.
Okay, I feel really far away now. So today, what I want to show you is a process that I use in my own classroom. I highlighted in my board report, but I just kind of wanted to give a little bit more detail, because I really love this process, and it's something that I share with a lot of other teachers. And it came about from the instructional leadership team that I'm on at my school. A problem of practice was how can we increase student achievement with regards to scores on the chapter unit assessments? As we were looking at data, we're very data-driven, looking at teachers' assessment scores, weren't up to par with the district assessments as well, students not reaching a lot of those standards and targets that we wanted them to reach. And it's not just our school. We saw that when we walked around to the different classrooms, but I like this quote here, and this really hits home, is, it says, "An enormous proportion of daily lessons are simply never assessed formally or informally. For the majority of lessons, no evidence exists by which a teacher could gauge or report on how well students are learning essential standards." So it's basically the teachers teaching in the classroom, but are the kids getting what we're teaching? No matter how effective of a teacher you are at, or knowing your information, if the kids aren't getting it, you're not going to be successful, neither are they. And it reminded me of this cartoon that I saw, it says, "I taught Spot how to talk. I don't hear him talking. I said I taught him. I didn't say he learned it." And that's what it reminds me of in the classroom a lot of times, and in looking back at my own practice and the way that I grew up and the teachers I had, you know, they taught and taught and taught, and then you take the test at the end, you know, they don't have any way to gauge that measure in between. So as we sat down as a team, we were looking, how can we help the students and the teachers be more successful at, or being successful achieving the standards? So there's three main areas that we were looking at, was chunking down material. A lot of research says, especially, who was that? I have that on here. Black and William, that frequent shorter tests, students do well on, especially low-achieving students, and new learning should be assessed within a week of their learning. So we were looking at that and checking student understanding, and a lot of Marzano work with formative assessment, and then to gather and use the data for, for teachers to inform their instruction. So taking that, we went forward and, and this is the difference between the old way and the new way, and with me as well. Looking at this cartoon, it says, "Good morning, we'll be heading to London this morning. Have a great flight. Pilot flies for five hours heading due east and lands." Okay, are we in London? No, rats. I thought we were headed in the right direction. No time to go back now, flight to Paracet Two. So it's kind of that moving on. You're teaching the students, you realize you didn't hit that goal, we've got deadlines, pacing, you just have to move on. Where now with the new way, it's more of a GPS. You're always checking your direction as you're going, and as you check your direction, you realize where you're going, and you get to the right spot at the right time. So I just wanted to go over my process that I use in the classroom, that I've been piloting for the last, the previous year and this year as well, and trying to introduce more of our staff at, at my school as well as other schools that I go to, talk about my process. So in my process, what I do is I do on Monday a pre-test, finding out where students at. Again, a lot of research shows that students are, are taking students' prior knowledge, letting students know where they're going, where they're heading, what they'll be learning. There's a lot of great outcomes from that. So they take a pre-test every Monday. The students know, it's just for me to find out where they're at. It's not going to be held against them. So they come in, they take that. I'll use that assessment to find out what students already know about the standards and the topic that I'll be teaching that week. And then I can adjust my instruction, whether I need to get more detailed, or whether I can start at the basics for whatever topic I'm on. Also give the students learning targets. Marzano, there are students who can identify what they're learning significantly, outscore those who cannot. And that's a process that our school has put in place in the last five years, and it's worked really well. Any classroom that you go into, there are ICAN statements on the board, and those statements are supposed to be relayed to the students at the beginning of class, and the students will know what target that they need to hit, and I'll show you an example in a second. So this is just my classroom, the learning targets are up there, they're told to the students, and the students will know what the outcomes, what their outcomes are for that day or for that unit. And I actually have them write that down on a sheet, and they rate themselves on how they're understanding it. I do a lot of the rating. So after the Monday pre-test, we do a lot of formative, daily formative assessments in my classroom. That's the checking in. This can be anything from what I have here, thumbs up, thumbs down, are you understanding it? That kind of break in between, learning the material. I've used Google Forms to do it, the sticky notes with the tickets out, exit tickets. This is during each lesson each day to find out, are the students really getting it? Because if they're not getting it, and I get a lot of thumbs down or unsure, then I can reteach right there at that moment instead of moving on and not knowing if the students are understanding the material. And I truly believe this is essential, that every time students leave our classroom, as a teacher, we should be asking these questions. How do I know that they learned what I wanted them to learn? Which parts of the objective did students struggle with? And most importantly, how can I adjust my instruction? And that's one thing when people ask me, do, I know some other fellow teachers, you plan, your lesson plan month in advance, weeks in advance, units in advance. I'm not like that. Mine's very flexible, very fluid. I have ideas, but then it's based on how my students are understanding. If they're not understanding, then I'll add something in the next day, do another lab, do another activity, another way, way to help them learn, take something out the next day if it feels like they're really getting it. And I think that's really important, to be flexible in your instruction. And I think that's really important, to be flexible in your instruction. Every single Friday in my classroom, we do a Friday post-test over just that material for that week, and just the content standards for the week. And that will be my way to see if students really learned it, and for them to know if they've learned it, and if they've reached those targets and those goals for the class. On the Friday post-test, what I do is I take the data, and I will look at the most missed questions, the ones that the students aren't understanding, and those are the ones that we'll reteach and have students relearn those the next week. I have a website, I've been using a lot of con videos and different type of webinar-style videos for students who are behind and not understanding their content standards, so they can watch some of those at home, or different things that I can do in the classroom to help reteach that. And then what I do is I allow students to do retakes, I call them retake Wednesdays. And in the past, what I found out is, if you hand back a weekly assessment, and they get an E, it gets crumpled up and thrown away, okay, I don't know it. But what I require the students, if you have a D or an E, what they need to do is they need to make the corrections on that quiz, and that is their ticket to do a retake, so it doesn't get thrown away. It also really teaches the students the message that, okay, you got an E, you don't get it, let's just move on. No, it's, you didn't understand it, you need to still understand it, you need to be held accountable for your learning. And just have seen tremendous growth in students being accountable for their own, coming in those Wednesdays, retaking when they don't understand something, and even the students getting Bs who want to do better, the standards that they didn't understand, they're retaking that and doing well. And the cycle continues until I'm done at the end of a unit or the end of a chapter, and then we'll end up with the summative. And from doing this process, by the time they get to the end of the chapter and the summative unit after three to four weeks, it's great, they're, the test scores are excellent because they've gone through the cycle along the way, they've learned it, they've chunked it down, they have small successes along the way, which is really important for the students, to have those successes, as they see they're learning it, they get to the end of the chapter, and they do quite well. So this is the process that we're really pushing at our school, and since I've been working with this for a while, I'm really talking about how well it works for me, and other teachers are seeing that. I've talked to different schools, I have other teachers that are excited about this process. It seems very simple, but this chunking down and this working in bits and pieces and doing the form of assessment has really been working well for a lot of people. And then, again, collecting the data, I take the data from each week, from the pre and post, so I can look at the percentage of increase. Again, I love the data, being a math person as well, and our school pushes that, and we're wanting teachers to really put that on paper and to see the percentage of proficiency and then of mastery as well. And then at the end, you can see data tables such as this. So you have, the pre-test shows, you know, that the students didn't know a lot about the topic. You have the first post-test in yellow, and then the retake, and then the form of assessment in between there to help them reach that goal. And my, my numbers before I started doing this a few years ago were probably about half of this bar, and then, of course, the red bar would be very low at the end. Why weren't the students getting it? I was teaching great, you know? But you realize they're not getting it, and you have to adjust your instruction. So the biggest question I get from teachers is, okay, this has gotta take a lot more time, it's a lot more entailed process, but it honestly doesn't take a lot more time with the pacing, and I like this quote, is what I share with them. "It's better to take many small steps in the right direction than to make a giant leap forward only to stumble backwards." And that's what I see when we're taking those small steps with the students with the successes. So just wanted to share that process, and that's where we're trying to move more and more teachers in our building to do this process. Thank you.
I don't know how you snuck into this Teacher of the Year thing. No, you're fabulous, and what a, what a, yeah.
I told Bobby Joe that I, her reports are so informative about what they actually do in a school.
Yeah, very much.
Very helpful.
Yeah. Thank you, glad we got this. Yeah, yeah. Thank you, Bobby Joe. Discussion action items, first one, Marty has said we're okay, because nothing's going on yet across the street, but I think we'll be, maybe next month might be different. And I don't know, there's a tentative legislative?
Committee schedule is one scheduled, isn't it?
No, we need to do that. You're gonna set a committee meeting?
Probably should have one in case. And if nothing's moving, it'll be one thing, but...
Fine, you do it through email? Now that I know what we're slated to do.
Okay. So we'll get that done, so then we're ready if we need to act on something the next month.
Prepared.
John, on your...
I move approval of the State Board facilitating convening community forums this spring.
Moved by John, supported by Dan. Further discussion? All in favor, aye.
Aye.
opposed, same? Agree?
I move the consent agenda, the name change request. One item.
Moved by John?
I don't know about that. What do we think about that?
Yeah, we don't, we don't like Reese's.
Can't talk to somebody.
That's it.
Oh, that's right, it's consent, your stuff.
The one item, we didn't need a consent agenda.
All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same? Thank you. Comments? I know Richard indicated he had, he had one. Comments by board members?
I wish, I wish our other colleagues were here right now. Just, I think, I understand that as of this time, you are now the State Superintendent currently in office, who has served the longest time in the United States.
That's true, yeah, by a couple of days now.
A couple of days now. And I just, just want to share with my colleagues, my, my great respect, this began when I ran that small parochial school in northwest Detroit, and you were Superintendent Wayne Reza. And I admire your commitment to education, which is buffeted by strong feelings from the left and the right, and different directions in, among politics, but you've been a real anchor. And I appreciate, the two years I've been on the board, I've grown to appreciate your team-building skills with the Department of Education, and your positive attitude, your willingness to affirm the positive in all of us diverse members of the board, and I think this milestone moment should not pass without our taking notice.
Thank you very much. Boy, I would've got you on earlier if I knew. You know, so that there isn't too much of a longevity fuss. The irony is, the gentleman who had more longevity had like twenty-two years more longevity. And he's, he's in his eighties, wonderful guy, was North Dakota, and he, we were sitting next to each other at a session a couple of years ago, and, and he always calls me Kid. And I'm like, oh, really? And he says, Kid, yeah, back when, back when I was Lieutenant, back in the, back in the sixties when I was Lieutenant Governor, and I'm thinking, back when you were in your sixties, or back in, it was back in the sixties? And then he ran for governor, didn't win, and then, this is an elected spot in that state, so he ran for State Superintendent and had been there until he decided not, you know, once you're in those elected jobs, you sometimes stay. But thank you, I appreciate the heartfelt words, and...
Because there was a big turnover of superintendents
Yeah.
The last couple of years, with new governors and...
Oh, yeah. I mean, I do think it's one of the advantages of a State Board as opposed to appointed. You know, I mean, it's, not because I'm in it now, but I think continuity, I'll give you an example, whether you think, well, I won't mention the state, but there's a nearby state, whether you think they made progress or not, and there's different opinions about that. It's all done. He got unelected, he'll go back, no, they'll make progress again. With something, you just can't, it's hard to keep continuity, and I think what you have here with this staff, not just Superintendent, is a group that gets where the board is, gets how we want it. We're focused on kids, focused on student achievement, and I do appreciate the acknowledgement of sometime the difficulty. We're, you know, we're subject to budgets that the governor makes decisions on. Other governors have executive ordered departments outside this department, away from us, which I don't think is in the interest of local districts, so, you know, we try to find a balance so that we don't pander, but don't...
There's another P-word. You said PO, we're...
But I, I think the board, so thanks for sharing, but I think we, as a team, do that pretty well, and thank you. Tentative agenda for next meeting? I guess agenda planning, we'll think about that, and maybe the charter possibility. Future meeting dates, next one is two days before Valentine's Day, Kat, so we'll want those Valentines handed out here for all of us to...
I think you sent everything, Marilyn, the protocol for the state of the state tomorrow night, the Greg?
Yes.
Okay, so everyone has that, if you think you didn't have it already?
You sent it through email? Oh, okay. Specific times.
Tomorrow night.
Thank you.
So we'll see you tomorrow?
We'll see you, see you there. How many are, who's heading over there tomorrow?
Cassandra, I don't know if she's coming.
Good.
Yeah, John and Isabelle coming?
I don't know.
She's had a change of plane.